Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Dr. J.D. Ward is with New Hope United Methodist Church. He's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll house Councilman McAtee if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Let us bow together in prayer. Oh God, we give you thanks for the blessings of life, liberty, and love. We acknowledge, Lord, that you are the Creator of all life, the giver of true freedom, and a God who loves all people everywhere. We are grateful to live in a land where we can choose leaders who are responsive to the needs and rights of the people. Lord, grant our elected leaders the wisdom to make wise decisions. Help them to be responsive not only to the desires of the wealthy and powerful, but to the cries of the poor and the helpless. Make them a blessing to the people they serve and use them to improve the quality of life for all the citizens of Oklahoma City. Thank you for hearing us this day and answering us when we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the city of Oklahoma City enjoys a wonderful relationship with Oklahoma City University and especially the Fine Arts Program. And we this morning are going to get an advanced preview of one of the upcoming songs that's going to be performed at the Pirates of Penzance. And P.T. Mahoney is here. P.T., come on up. I got a chance to meet P.T. a little bit this morning. He is a sophomore from Kansas City, Missouri, spent a year playing college football, then decided his love for the arts was too much, searched the country for the best school, and wound up here in Oklahoma City at Oklahoma City University. So we'll find out more details about how people can go see the Pirates of Penzance on OCU's campus. But I know first you're going to perform Pirate King.
Oh, better far to live and die, under the brave black flag I fly, than play a sanctimonious part of the pirate head and a pirate heart. Away to the cheating world go you, where pirates all are well-to-do, but I'll be true to the song I sing, and live and die a pirate king. Oh, I am a pirate king, and it is, it is a glorious thing to be a pirate king, for I am a pirate king, and it is, it is a glorious thing to be a pirate king. Hurrah for the pirate king, hurrah for the pirate king! When I sadly fought to seek my prey, I held myself in a royal way. I sink a few more ships, it's true, than a well-bred monarch to do. What many a king on a first-class throne, he wants to call his crown his own, must manage somehow to get through, more dirty work than ever I do. Oh, I am a pirate king, and it is, it is a glorious thing to be a pirate king, for I am a pirate king, and it is, it is a glorious thing to be a pirate king. Hurrah for the pirate king, hurrah for the pirate king!
Wonderful, P.T. Thank you so much. Yeah. And tell us how we can come see this performance?
Okay, so Pirates of Penzance goes up February 27th. On the 27th and 28th, there's an 8:00 p.m. performance. And then Sunday, March 1st, there's a 3:00 p.m. matinee.
And their website information, do you have it now?
You can go to the box office page on Oklahoma City University's main webpage.
All right. P.T. Mahoney, let's show our appreciation. We're awed by your talent. Thank you for coming down this morning and being part of our council meeting.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Who wants to follow that? As we call the meeting to order, we have a couple of appointments on item three. Okay. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And then it moves us on to item four, which is the Journal of Council Proceedings. And item 4A is to receive the journal for February 17th, and 4B is to approve the journal for February 3rd and 10th. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And then item five is revocable permits.
Mayor, Mrs. Hewlett has requested a deferral of her request.
Where?
No, 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 on revocables.
Oh, on revocables. I thought you had started requests for uncontested continuance.
I can get there in a minute, but on A1.
Okay. And so this is going to be deferred one week? Item 4A, 5A1, okay. How about a motion then to defer 5A1 a week? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And then 5A2, sounds like we're good to go. Is there anyone here from the Oklahoma City County Health Department Wellness Now Coalition that wants to hold Open Streets OKC?
Mayor, I've had a chance to meet with them. This is the second year that they're going to host this event. The idea is really to promote outdoor activities along 23rd Street, running basically between Robinson and Western. Last year, there were so many folks, there almost wasn't room to do the wellness activities they wanted to do. So they've actually moved the food trucks and things off onto some of the side streets, but there's going to be skateboarding and bike riding and jogging and all sorts of outdoor activities. And lots of information, not just from the City County Health Department, but all sorts of different social service agencies focusing in the area of health and wellness. It's a terrific event. I'd move approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second on item 5A2. Cast your votes. And that permit is extended.
If I could say one other thing quickly, Mayor. They're also working on bringing one of these down to South Oklahoma City on Southwest 29th Street. They tried to do it this spring, but it collided with that wonderful Dia de los Niños that's also on 29th Street. So they're actually going to move the event to the fall, but they'll do the same concept down on Southwest 29th, I think, in September.
Great. Okay. Now, it's item six, requests for uncontested continuance.
A couple this morning on page 14, under item 9D1. Item A, 1116 Southwest Grand, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item C, 7932 South McKinley, we need to strike. Owner has removed. Item D, 3,005 Southwest 13th Street, we need to strike. The owner has removed. Then moving to item 9F1. Item A, 1116 Southeast Grand, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. And item D, 7932 South McKinley, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? We'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are seven items. All right, we have a motion in a second on the MFA. Comments or questions from council?
Your Honor, I have a question.
All right.
Pardon me, I'm sorry. I gotta hit myself. It's on PPA. I got to ask you a question on the MFA. Is this where we put the people who have workman comp claims?
Say that, ask that again.
We have workman comp claims, and we itemize what the costs those claims are?
Yes.
And are we required by law to pay court costs?
I'm sure we are. But let's get -- Jordan, answer that.
I actually don't know the answer to that. I'm virtually positive we are, but I'll get you a definitive answer from Rick Smith here shortly.
It's a definite maybe.
Definite maybe, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
As many things in the law, it's a definite maybe.
Um, we have a definite maybe. The answer is yes. Okay. All right, there's your definite.
Thank you for the legal answer, Mr. Freeman.
All right, let's vote the MFA. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are three items.
Move the items.
All right, comments or questions on the PPA?
Your Honor, I have a question on PPA. One of them, PPA B, we're allocating $50,000. We can buy trinkets for the golf course deal. I think that's wonderful. The golf courses are really a -- can be an economic development tool, but I'm not sure I can conceive what the value in those trinkets are.
You know, they're putting together an advertising package. Rounds are down at the golf courses. They're trying to get them back up to where they were a few years back, and it's a multi-tiered marketing approach that they're using.
They need $50,000 worth of key change and beer can holders.
I don't know the extent of the trinkets.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to.
All right, let's vote the PPA. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just two items today. All right, comments or questions on the EAT? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, we have a motion in a second. Are there any individual considerations?
And Mayor, I have 7H. I'll piggyback on David with item J1 and item 7R, please.
Your Honor, I have a minor question on item T.
And, Your Honor, item I.
All right. David, you want to get started with item J?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's concerning the approval of the Economic Development Services Contract with the South Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce focusing on I-240. And first of all, I'd like to thank the Economic Development Committee for providing this funding. This program goes back to 2011, when ULI funded a study to address the continuing loss of retail along I-240. And as a result of that study, InVision 240 Committee was created, and thanks to the shepherding by the South Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, they are very close to forming a Business Improvement District. This has taken, you know, several years to accomplish, but what I've learned is anything good really does create, I mean, does require a certain amount of time. And the first two years, I think we saw a continued reduction or loss of sales, especially along I-240, but also throughout South Oklahoma City and in particular Ward 5. Through their efforts, they have stabilized I-240, and now the two largest shopping centers are close to being fully occupied. If we also look at what's gone on further east along I-240 at Plaza Day Mayor or the old Crossroads Mall, they are now approaching 50% occupancy, and just a few years ago, they were down in the low 20s. My point is, through these efforts of private citizens and businesses, we have kind of turned things around, and I believe the efforts to improve the commercial area along I-240 will result in benefits to the city through improved retail activity, increased sales, increased sales tax revenue that we will benefit from. Plus, I believe we can minimize the growth of blight when we focus on the commercial development. That tends to help reduce the blight in the residential areas and the community around I-240. When I've visited the various homeowners' associations, recognize the importance of supporting these businesses and have committed to do that. So again, I just want to thank the South Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development Committee, and more recently, the Alliance for Economic Development and the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, who authorized and funded a sales tax study for Ward 5. And we're looking forward to the formal report from that study, and we hope we can continue to improve the retail efforts in South Oklahoma City. And I feel very confident, as I can turn it over perhaps to Councilwoman Salier, that the same results will occur with respect to the area along Southwest 29th.
Thank you, David. I'll start maybe with item 7H, which is a resolution that approves an allocation of some additional community development block grant funds to the Homeless Alliance to complete their 20-unit, single-room occupancy, permanent supportive housing project. And I just want to recognize some of the team from -- Homeless Alliance are here today. They've put in a tremendous amount of time to raise over $500,000 in private dollars to match with these grants and almost $60,000 of in-kind contribution. So it's a very important project to complete the block at essentially Fourth and Virginia. Appreciate everything you're doing. Following David's comments, item 7J1 is a professional services agreement with the Southwest 29th Street Business Improvement District Association. And the Economic Development Committee met and approved this last week as well. This is an effort that spans both Ward 4 and Ward 6. It's been underway since 2013. And, you know, as our other business improvement districts have done, they really create a positive voice for affecting change in districts. And I'd like to recognize Chip Oppenheim, who's a property owner in the area. He has privately funded this effort up until this point, and so our Economic Development Committee has authorized it not to exceed $24,500 service agreement to get this bid in place. And I think we're also very far along in that process. Thank you. And my third quick note is item 7R is the expenditure of some 2007 bond issues on a couple of parks, including Red Andrews Park. And I think I saw our Parks Director come in. I may have lost Doug, but there are three parks identified here, and Red Andrews is a little tiny park on 8th Street. It's -- but it's in the Cottage District where tons of growth is going on, and the neighbors are really excited to see some improvement. So appreciate the attention this is getting.
Yeah, Pat?
Your Honor, thank you. I just have a question on item 7T. You use the term environmental clearance. What does that mean?
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. As we work with ODOT and the state using federal funds for projects, there are different environmental considerations that are taken. These aren't your traditional contaminated soil type things, but it's safety matters, noise, impacts to property owners. So when they use the word environmental, it's really inclusive of all those things.
It was safety as well as?
This one particularly is safety clearances that were required on this project that came after that was constructed. So this one had more to do with safety than anything else, yes.
Did we have said that in our description of the project?
I think...
Probably.
We probably should have done that, yes.
It's just curious. Can I have a -- there's a question, Your Honor, while I've got the microphone here. On AE, we're authorizing 85, almost $86 million worth of bondage, bonds being sold.
Yes.
Excuse me, you're related to the 2007 bond issue. How much will we have left now?
How much will be left?
Yes, we have these.
We'll get that back to you. We certainly have that information.
It'll be $274 million is left to sell. Is that what you're talking about? Yes.
I think we maybe need a word of explanation as to why we're moving so slowly, relatively slowly, on this bond sale.
So when we...
There's two factors on why we're not selling it any faster than we were. One is the recession of '09 that came back and hit the prices, and the other, and the most significant issue is the 3% sales tax, or property tax cap that's been put on over the last few years, which has limited the growth of the Avalon growth. And so our property growth did not meet the projections that we made when we anticipated in '07 because of that factor. That's the single largest factor, Mr. Ryan.
Okay. I think we ought to make a point of that, because I think some of our people are going to be indebted before they see the 2007 projects completed.
There's no doubt that that '07 GO bond issue is taking longer than anticipated for those two reasons.
Okay, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have one other quick question.
Okay.
On AH, this is Martin Nature Park. This is a very popular place, a very emotionally impacted place, and we're extending the contract to do some work for a year. Are we confident we'll be able to complete that in a year?
Yes, sir. We're confident that they'll be able to continue. Remember, this is just the first phase of the master plan that Wilderness Matters came forward with, so we're working with them to keep going and keeping improving Martin Park.
And have you had meetings with the Friends of Martin Nature Park?
I'm sorry?
Have you had any meetings with Friends of Nature Park?
We have -- they've redone their letters of incorporation, and we actually have a seat on the Friends of Martin Park Board now. So yes, we're in constant communications with them.
Thank you.
All right, John?
Oh, you're all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item I is a loan agreement with the Community Enhancement Corporation for $75,000 used in community development block grant funds for the installation of a new roofing at the Providence Apartments Sober Living Community, which is off of Northeast 10th Street. And I just wanted to recognize Oklahoma City Housing Authority and those who are with Community Enhancement Corporation for you all's work in the community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, John, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we do have also a presentation this morning on item Z. And Z is a project that the Water Utilities Trust has been working on for many, many months, and it has to do with response to a proposal by the federal government, particularly Tinker Air Force Base, for the ownership, operation, and recapitalization, which is the big thing, of the water and wastewater facilities at Tinker Air Force Base. There's a couple of options that we're going forward with. And Marsha, are you going to introduce us, or are we going to go straight to our friend from Guernsey?
City Manager Jared Stiggi from Guernsey Engineering is with us today to make the presentation. We're happy to answer questions.
And we will be going into executive session later in the meeting to discuss the specifics of the pricing.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time this morning. My name is Jared Stiggi. I'm a senior vice president with Guernsey, a background in economics and law. And for the past 15 years, I've been working with the Contracting Officer Agency from the federal government that has put forward this solicitation to the trust that we'll be talking about today. We were engaged last year to assist with this proposal along with the trust and to develop something that would be responsive and yet protect the ratepayers and the citizens of Oklahoma City from providing undue support to Tinker, looking to provide a fair amount of utility service. So if we could go on to the first slide, this will be familiar to some of you, but this is a long process. We've been involved in the procurement phase, which is in the upper left, for about 15 months, and we are approaching submitting proposals, which are due to the federal government by March 16th. They're then undertake a period of negotiations, which will be over many months. And you can see the first diamond there represents contract award. If there is a -- if the federal government and the trust and the city can come to an agreeable set of terms, we would then have a six-month transition period during which we would work on transitioning those assets out at Tinker from federal ownership to ownership by the city and operation by the Water Utilities Trust. At the end of transition, you can see the second diamond there is the performance start date, and the contract that the federal government is envisioning is a 50-year contract that would have an option to renew for an additional 50 years at the end of that term. The reason for the length of that contract is primarily driven by the amount of capital investment that's made out at Tinker. Their utility systems, both water and wastewater, are approximately 90% depreciated, and they need a sizable investment of funds to bring those systems up to current standards. In addition to that, I'm sure you're all aware of the recent activities, both with regard to the GM plant and the rail yard out there. The proposal that Tinker has requested from the trust is solely with regard to their existing assets within Tinker Air Force Base. So these additional items that would be coming down the road would most likely be added to this as well and further reinforcing the need for a long contract so that not only the trust can undertake to construct the assets, but then can recover the costs that are expended over a period of time. One of the next slide. We all, of course, have many objectives, but there's three overarching ones that we're trying to keep in mind as we move forward. Of primary importance is that the existing ratepayers not subsidize Tinker Air Force Base. Tinker, being a military installation, as you can imagine, has higher service requirements than your typical customer for water and wastewater services. And as a result, the cost to serve Tinker is going to be greater than serving typical customers. And for that reason, the proposal is designed so that Tinker is -- costs are accumulated as a separate cost center, and those costs can then be charged back to Tinker alone and not be shared with the overall ratepayers. A second important objective is to retain Tinker because they are a strong employer and an economic engine in our community. As I said, their utility systems are severely depreciated at this point, and this is a problem the Air Force has, not just at Tinker, but at their portfolio of installations around the world. And so they are looking to access and leverage the bonding ability of organizations like the Water Utilities Trust to help them accomplish the work that needs to be done across their footprint of installations within their available budget. Lastly, we're looking to minimize the number of new full-time employees, new permanent hires that the trust would have to make to serve Tinker. As these systems transition from federal ownership to ownership by the trust, there's a large amount of work required upfront to accomplish that. That work disappears over the first five years or so, and then you arrive at more of a steady state. And so we've attempted to make the permanent hires that will be necessary over the long term and not making hires for the short term for work requirements that will go away after a few months. There's several pricing models that are available from the federal government, and the one that's been selected, go back. I'm sorry, you're right there. I'm sorry, I skipped ahead a slide. So we are making three proposals to the federal government. There's what are considered the base proposals, and the base proposals are responsive to the terms of the government's solicitation. For the water, Tinker currently does not purchase water from the trust other than in emergency situations. They have 23 groundwater wells. They treat that groundwater with chlorine and chlorine, and that's a very labor-intensive, capital-intensive way to deliver water to the installation. Nevertheless, that's the requirement of the government to be responsive to their current way of doing business, and so that will be the base proposal. For the wastewater system, likewise, they operate in a manner that is inconsistent with the way the trust operates. They have over 50 wastewater lift stations at Tinker, and that's largely due to the way that the federal government doesn't have the ability to make long-term capital plans. They often construct facilities on a relatively shorter timeframe, and so rather than building a gravity system, they have a lot of force mains. And so our proposal will be to construct some new interceptors that will allow us to remove, hopefully up to about 45 or so of those lift stations. There's some that just won't be economically viable to remove, but we do plan to remove most of them. For the alternate, we are submitting one alternate proposal, and that would be for the water system, and that would be to discontinue use of the 23 wells and provide water to Tinker from treated water that's produced by the city. All right, now I can move forward. All right, now I can move forward. The pricing models offered by the federal government are two. One is a firm fixed price with an economic price adjustment, which means the price that would be submitted would be considered firm, and it would change over time tied to an economic index. These types of proposals are typically good for the seller but not good for the buyer, which in this case is the city and the trust, and so the other option is a regulated tariff model, and that is consistent with how the trust currently prices its water and wastewater services to the rate payers. And so that is the method of proposal that's been selected. This allows the trust to recover its cost of service to Tinker over time based upon actual cost. Costs may go up over time due to inflation or commodities, costs could go down due to recessionary influences, things like that. Whatever the actual cost to serve Tinker turns out to be in any given year, that will be adjusted through a common cost of service regulatory model to provide the updated utility rates to Tinker. In addition to those cost of service means of recovering the costs incurred to provide water and wastewater service to Tinker, the trust will also have a contract with the federal government, and anytime you have a contract with the federal government, there are other opportunities to be made whole for certain conditions, such as a change in scope, i.e. if they were to add the GM plant, that would be obviously a change in scope that results in a price change. There could be subsurface contamination or underlying utility systems that aren't knowable at this time because we haven't taken ownership of the system. If we discover those types of things, those can be handled through a contract, either request for equitable adjustment or a contract claim, and so while the annual adjustment of the rates based upon cost of service would be the most preferred way to recover the cost of serving Tinker, the trust will also have these contractual remedies available should it decide that it needs recovery more expedited than on an annual rate redetermination basis. So the way we have approached minimizing the staff that will be required for full-time is primarily through capital improvements, consulting services, and specialized services. The capital improvements I've already described to you, eliminating those 23 wells and up to 45 of those lift stations, will greatly reduce the number of staffing that's required out there. Currently, because they have these many points of service and don't have a robust SCADA system, they have to staff their operations 24/7, and by implementing the capital improvements that the trust is proposing, we'll be able to step that staffing way back because we will either be eliminating those components or placing them on a SCADA system so that they can be monitored remotely, and we can dispatch people to work on them as need be. Consultant service during the transition period is designed to not only provide expertise that may not reside within the city's resources, but also to provide the surge capacity necessary to accomplish the tasks that need to be done during that first three to five years, and then to have those resources go away and be left with the residual long-term staffing that the trust will need to operate for the remainder of 45 years. And lastly, specialized services will be retained from the Oklahoma City community also to provide some of the things like GIS and utility locates, things like that, that would reduce the need for the trust to hire. So I'd like to close by just covering some of the major features and benefits that I've discussed already. The proposals include a lot of protective language to make sure that the trust clearly delineates its assumptions, what it is willing to provide to Tinker as far as service, and the limitations of that service, so that if there are requests for expanded service in the future, we've created a bright line beyond which we can then negotiate a change in scope to provide those extra services to Tinker. We are providing cost of service, a cost of service price model, which assures that the actual cost to serve will be recovered from Tinker and that we will not need to have subsidies from the remaining rate payers. We've attempted to reduce staffing through both the use of new capital projects and use of surge labor from the consultant community, and the main two things are the last two bullets, and that's the benefits to Oklahoma City. Tinker needs its utility systems, both water and wastewater, for it to continue its mission and for it to continue to be the economic engine that it is in the Oklahoma City community, and so while it cannot necessarily provide these capital improvements by itself, the city and the trust can do that, and that will be very beneficial so that Tinker can continue and extend its mission. And lastly, the amount of capital improvements required are in the many tens of millions of dollars, and it is expected that when we put those RFPs on the street, a lot of those services will be provided by local contractors, a lot of those engineering designs will be performed by local engineering firms, and so the economic stimulus that will come to Oklahoma City from this will also be a significant benefit that we see in this project. If Tinker does not, I mean, supplies these assets to the city and to the trust, it's certain that they will still need to make improvements, but these improvements will probably come more as on a failure basis or a breakdown basis and will be drawn out over a long period of time, whereas this will present a large capital infusion into the community over the first 10 to 15 years.
Any questions?
Any questions?
This is a result of a long process that we've gone through with the Water Trust. We've had a number of these presentations as we've gone forward. This is a big, a major step for the Water Trust. It's a big, big opportunity for us, and I think we have vetted it as well as possible at the trust level, and I'm anxious to see it move forward.
I look at this as a real opportunity to use our assets, not necessarily our physical assets, but our knowledge and where our pipes and that type of things, to come at with a more cost-effective model for Tinker to go forward in the future and make them more cost-effective as they complete their missions, and yet we're to be able to do this without having a negative impact on the rate payers of Oklahoma City. So I think it's really a win-win if we can get this put together, but it's, you know, it's millions of, millions of dollars of capital investment that need to be done out there, so it's a fairly, fairly large undertaking, but again, if we are able to achieve our goals, I think it'll be good for the city and for Tinker.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
We also have an issue on item Y that a citizen has showed up to speak about, James Tyler. And is Jaclyn Bass in the audience today? Okay, well, as Mr. Tyler's coming up, let me remind council a little bit of how we got here. You can go ahead and come to the microphone, and I'll kind of give it some background. This has to do with some parking restrictions that are on Northeast 16th Street between Lindsay and Phillips. Mrs. Bass, who was a resident in the area, requested the traffic commission remove those parking restrictions and allow parking. Mr. Tyler showed up at the first traffic commission hearing on the item, and the result was the traffic commission denied Ms. Bass's request. She appealed to us in December. You may remember she came here in the chambers and appealed that decision. Upon hearing that she didn't show up at the original traffic commission hearing, I asked the council to send this back to the traffic commission so the traffic commission could hear both of the residents give their sides to the story. That took place in January, and the traffic commission has now decided to abide by Ms. Bass's request and remove those parking restrictions. So it's on today to be introduced for a final hearing in March, and Mr. Tyler is here, I assume, to still speak out against the parking restrictions being removed.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'm not sure if this is a hearing to set the date for next week?
Yes, we are, the item is just being introduced today to encourage public discussion, and the item would be brought back for a final hearing on March 3rd is when we would have a final vote, but feel free to speak your mind today.
Well, I've always been opposed to this particular lifting of the restrictions on 16th Street. I find it to be, the restrictions are already in place, not to be too harsh. It's only from 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and every other time in the week, it's, you're able to park on the street, and all the other streets, there's only two streets in our neighborhood, and one of them is actually, is 14th Street on the north side and then on the south side between Lindsay and Phillips, and then the south side on Lindsay and Phillips on 14th Street has already, has already been procured by the Oklahoma OU Medical Science Center to be student parking. It's already student parking, and I feel that if you lift the restrictions on our street, on one side of our street, that the students will start parking on our street. I mean, students, if they don't have to pay for parking and walk two blocks, I feel that they will. It's a, it's not, it's a small sacrifice to keep the streets clear during the business hours, I feel. It's, you know, the neighborhood is up and coming, it's, there's a lot of excitement about it, and to just pull one street out and lift the restrictions on one street when everybody else seems to live with it, I just think is wrong.
What, what feedback did you get from the traffic commission when you presented your case?
Well, you know, I got a mix. The first time I went, they voted against it. The second time I went, they voted for it, and I'm not real sure how they, I, I'm very confused by it, honestly.
They didn't say anything?
One time they voted against it.
When they voted for it, though, what feedback did they give you for abiding by what she was trying to accomplish?
Well, they thought it was convenient. They thought, she claims that there's a parking ticket problem, like there's too many tickets being issued on our street, and for the two years, and two and a half years I lived there, I've never seen anybody get a parking ticket there. You know, but we make sure that there'll be parks out on the street during those times. They said that there was enough, they also said that OU Medical Center has enough parking to, you know, for the students not to come on our streets, but if that's true, why are there already parking on 14th Street? And it's, the other thing was that they said it was slow down traffic on our street, but we're not worried about the speed of people on our street. And I'm not sure why they, I mean, I'm not sure why they flip-flopped on that, but it was very confusing to me.
Well, and I'll let the council remind them, on March 3rd, this will come up for an individual vote on council, and in being introduced today, but thank you for coming down and again, speaking your mind.
Thank you.
And before we vote, could we get a, you know, I know we have a map that shows just 16th, but can we get one that's zoomed out a little bit more and shows more of the streets of which, which streets have no parking, and so we can kind of get a little bit better comparison of the area?
We can do that.
All right. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Everybody ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. Oh, yeah.
I'd like, I'm sorry I'm late, but I'd like to make a comment on, on item J1.
Okay.
The 29th Business Improvement District. This is, I met with some folks about it recently this week, and this is a very unusual business improvement district in that it is probably the largest one in terms of actual size of any of the business improvement districts in Oklahoma City. It's a very ambitious undertaking to, to put a bid from Shields all the way to May Avenue, but I think there's a lot of enthusiasm, it appears to me, for doing it, and it looks like a good idea. It has, it could make a huge difference. It is rapidly becoming the most important corridor through the south, the close-in south, the near south, and I think it has a lot of potential, and I just wanted to comment on it. It's going to be well worth watching in terms of whether they're able to put it together for no other reason than the length of it. It's so large, but there's a lot of ground to be gained by doing it.
How long is it?
It's from Shields to May.
Oh, so three miles or something. Great.
So it's...
Pete, while it is a very lengthy corridor, surprisingly, it's very similar from Shields all the way to May. I mean, you get a lot of similar type of activity and buildings along the area, so I'm hopeful, too, that they'll be successful with this, and it could really turn that area around.
Well, that is a vibrant corridor. I drove through it just a few days ago, and, you know, there aren't, there aren't boarded up buildings anywhere on that street. I mean, everywhere is a viable business along Southwest 29th Street. It's great, it's great to see. No question, though, you could use an upgrade in infrastructure on our behalf, and obviously the property owners, too, can do better, but there's vibrancy, you know, there's a marketplace to, for improvements.
I think another thing that's really, oh, sorry, another thing that's really unique about it, it is extremely long, but there's a lot of concentrated property ownership, and that helps facilitate the success of getting this put in place, so seems to be an awful lot of support.
Yeah, well, it doesn't happen overnight, but I think this is a good step.
When the 2017 bonds come out, that area certainly could use some improvements with respect to the streets.
All right, early lobbying for the 2017 bond issues. All right, we ready to vote the consent docket? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. That puts us on to the concurrence docket. All right, are there any individual considerations? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously, and that moves us on to item nine. These are items that require a separate vote. The first is a series of zoning cases. Item 9A1 is in Ward 6. The address is 814 West Sheridan, and it's an ABC issue. Meg?
I didn't, is the applicant here? Great. Why don't you come tell us about this? This is just a...
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Jose Rodriguez. Mark Temple, my best partner. This is regarding a retro pub that we are looking to put in film district. It's 80s theme with the old arcade games, 80s music, 80s movies, so just something new to the district. We just want to continue the growth of Film Row and be a part of it.
Some of us remember all that music, I think, so I've heard a lot of buzz about it from the folks in the district. I think it's just one more exciting step to really making Film Row that mixed-use vibrant area it should be. I'd like to move approval.
May I ask a question? It appears to be a fairly narrow building. How wide is your building?
It's about 25 feet across and about 135 feet long, so it's about 3,500 square feet.
Yeah, but, well, good luck with this, but it, it does seem like it's going to present some challenges, unless you like to get into crowded areas when you go to places.
That's a standard Oklahoma City lot size, 25 by 140. It's just the way they come.
Yeah.
Very New York. It's a little Ben 73 size, probably.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, did you make a motion, Meg? Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second on item 9A1. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Item 9A2 is also an ABC issue. This one's in Ward 2 at 6705 North May Avenue. Ed?
This is an ABC overlay for Falcone's Restaurant. There was no protest. Passed planning commission unanimously. Move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Comments or questions on 9A2? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A3 is a request to rezone some property on Southwest 23rd Street from I-1 light industrial and I-2 moderate industrial to a new I-2 moderate industrial district. It's in Ward 3, Larry.
Yes, has anybody signed up? This was passed by the planning commission unanimously, unless the council has some questions, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A3. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 3500 North Sooner Road. It's currently a simplified plan unit development, and it would become a totally new spud if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The planning commission approved this January the 15th of this year, and I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second on item 9A4. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward 4 at 4901 Southeastern Avenue. It's currently I-2 moderate industrial and part of a spud, or it would be changing into a spud if approved. Pete?
Has anyone signed up to speak?
Nope.
I move approval.
All right, comments or questions on 9A5? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9A6 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 11500 Broadway Extension. It's currently in a pud, and it would become a new simplified plan unit development if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is to develop a medical office. The planning commission approved it on January the 15th. I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A6. Anyone here hoping to speak on this item? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. It passed unanimously. Item 9A7 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 2140 Southwest 44th Street. It's currently C-3 community commercial, and it would become a new spud if approved. Meg?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This ordinance was, um, approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. There were no protests, but there is a technical evaluation that was required, Bob, and I wanted to be sure that they'd agreed to the technical evaluations.
Yes, they agreed to it.
Great.
So it's next to a creek, so if there's any drainage issues, they'll have to address that.
Okay, and that will all happen during the remainder of the process?
Permitting process.
And the, I think the applicant must be here, and so applicants agreed to the technical evaluations? I, I think that's a yes.
2140, 2140, 2140?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. I just want a confirmation that all of those things had been agreed to. This is in conformance with the Oklahoma City plan, and so I would move approval.
All right, we're voting on 9A7. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. All right, item 9B is a request for a, a name change. This item was introduced a while back and is up for final hearing today. Has to do with, um, kind of, this is an ODOT issue, isn't it? Just trying to change the name of Shields between 4th and the, and the off-ramp?
It's not really an ODOT issue. It, it, it's become an issue because of the relocation of I-40, and now we've got a, it, an issue when you're coming off the interstate, you're on Shields for a little bit, and then it turns into Gaylord. And we thought it'd be, there were those that thought it'd be cleaner to, to make it one, and I think a couple of councilmen, uh, at the other end were very instrumental in making this happen.
Okay. All right. Anyone here hoping to speak on item 9B? All right? Do we have a motion? Second. And a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9C is a public hearing. Has to do with a proposed fee adjustment in sewer and sewage disposal, and this is a public hearing. Is there anyone hoping to speak on item 9C today?
Just want to point out, these are not residential rates. These are for industrial classes.
All right. Do we need to have a motion and a second to move this one on?
Move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Item 9C moves forward. Again, uh, moves us on to item 9D. This is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9D? All right, how about a motion, then, to move these on?
Yeah.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of the three items listed under 9E? All right, how about a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 9F is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9F? All right, how about a motion?
Yeah.
Cast your votes. 9F passes unanimously. We're on to item 9G. I understand we do not need executive session on this item?
Do not.
Okay, how about a motion, then, to approve the resolution?
With executive session.
Cast your votes. Item 9G passed unanimously. Item 9H, I understand we do need executive session? All right, how about a motion, then, to move 9H to executive session?
Do we have to, like, just say?
Cast your votes. That item moves to executive session. Item 9I, I understand we do need executive session on that item as well, so a motion to move 9I to executive session?
Yeah.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9J, I understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to strike would be in order?
Strike.
Okay, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Then item 9K, I think we do need executive session on this. Okay, how about a motion, then, to move 9K to executive session?
Yeah.
Cast your votes. That item moves to executive session. Item 10A is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on either of the items listed under 10A? All right, how about a motion?
Yeah.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 11 is items from council. James, you have anything for us today? Ed? Larry?
Yes, just briefly, there's a, a number of neighborhoods having meetings in the next week in Ward 3. Like to encourage the neighbors to get out and attend. Jimstone, Hilldale, Windsor Oaks, Windsor Forest, and Musgrave-Pennington. And, uh, starting a new year, it's always good to get the neighbors together and energized and moving in the right direction. Hope to see all the folks there at those meetings. Thank you, Your Honor.
Pete? Okay, David?
No.
Meg?
John?
Okay, Pat, I know you have an item for us today.
I have an item, uh, item 11A, and it's, uh, we're, we're attempting to redo what we tried to do a couple of weeks ago and got shot down on. This is just, uh, brings, uh, the state law into our ordinance, our code system, so that a, a police officer can issue a ticket rather than arresting a bicyclist and taking him to jail, or if we're just trying to enforce the state law. So this is a, a simpler thing, it's a quicker thing, and it's, it should be a convenience to bicycle riders. It, it's probably not going to happen very often, because most of our bicycle riders are aware of the danger of doing that sort of thing, but I have seen in recent weeks at least one example of that sort of thing.
Yeah, doesn't this bring us in accordance with the state law?
Yes.
State law already?
It's currently a state law that does this, says it. And it just, all this does is allow the, our police officers to issue a ticket to a bicycle rider instead of taking him to jail.
Okay. Item is just being introduced today, and a public hearing is set, set for March 3rd, and a final hearing is currently scheduled for March 10th. So how about a motion?
I have, I have a question.
Um, the, the, this is referring specifically to motorcycles, or, uh, to bicycles?
Is there already a code that refer, that makes it illegal for motorcycles or scooters or, or other things like that?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of. Uh, that would be added to a different section of the code, however, 32198, which Mr. Kramer sent us in an email, that, that's where you would put that for motorcycles. So it'd be, essentially be a separate ordinance, and that one would have to be referred to the Traffic Commission because they haven't reviewed that yet.
Okay, thanks. All right. We have a motion from Pat. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. Item is successfully introduced, and a public hearing is set for March 3rd. Anything else, Pat?
No. Yes, Your Honor, I just want another comment. On our boards and commissions, we have, have had some interest expressed, people, the board and commission, and we don't have any kind of a limitation on how long a person can be reappointed to those. Do we need to put into effect some term limits, essentially, on the-
Well, many of them do have, have limits, and some don't. It's, it's-
But do we need to be consistent through their-
Well, I don't think you, I mean, there's so many different boards and trusts and commissions that have so many jurisdictions and groups, I don't, I think it'd be troublesome to make a blanket policy on all of them.
Some of them do, and then, of course, some of them have technical requirements, so you've got to be a, a mechanical contractor, and we sometimes have problems finding people for those.
We've had some people come over here and say they wanted us to get involved with city matters, and we have no way to bring them into the fold, so to speak.
Generally, we're looking for people. We're not-
We typically reappoint people to those jobs over and over again, which I, I have no problem with that, except the fact that we are limiting ourselves a little bit in our ability to bring new people in.
Generally, there's not a backlog of people wanting to get involved that are, that are qualified to be involved.
That's, that's the qual, this is obviously is a-
Well, because some of them are, you know, mechanical restricted and, you know, has to have a, you know, a licensed plumber, for instance, to do certain types of inspections and those types of things. So, I mean, there are some technical issues with some of them. Those are the hardest ones to fill, uh, but we do effort to try and get new people on even those, when, when those openings come up. We just don't get a, a whole lot of people trying to, trying to serve on those volunteer bases.
I'm guessing after I Love Your City Day, we've got, we're going to have a pretty big stack, whether they've been delivered to you or not, we will have a pretty exciting group of candidates.
Well, I just saw it bring it up, Your Honor, I have no, no thoughts about it.
Okay.
Which one, do we know, which ones have term limits? What are some examples of ones with term limits?
Um, some of the design review of term limits, for instance.
Like urban design review or downtown design review? Okay. How long is the term limit for you?
Isn't it typically eight years?
I, I think that's, I think that's right.
On, on those, or two terms.
There was a notation in at least one of the memos today that Betsy Brunstetter's term expires, I think, in 17, just as an example.
And I think the Civic Center Foundation has a, a term limit. People term limit off that, too. And I think maybe the Zoo Trust has term limits?
Uh, the Zoo, yes. In, on some of the positions.
There you go. Some of them do, and some of them don't.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment on that, too. I, I personally want to tell you how much I appreciate the, uh, the recent appointments that reflect the diversity better than we have done it in the past. I've noticed that, and I appreciate it very much.
We're working at it.
I know.
All right. Um, city manager reports.
Uh, first up, we have, uh, Maureen Heffernan here this morning to give us an update on some of the activities at the Marion Gardens. Thanks for coming down on a snowy morning.
Good morning, thank you. Um, yes, I'm here to give you a brief year-end review of what, all the things that we did last year. So I'll just go through the year. This is just a little bit of what we do, but it's some of the highlights. And we're entering now our fourth year of this new public-private partnership, and I have to say, I think it's been extremely successful, and I hope what you see, that you'll share that opinion. Um, all right, let's see, I can, on this, do you have this one? Okay. Well, just a reminder, this is what we keep in mind every do, every day at the gardens. We try to keep it green, beautiful, active, maintained, safe, um, and really a site to build community, a place where all the diverse elements of the community can come together, learn something, enjoy, um, just have a beautiful oasis in the city. That's, that's our mission. And we've also been really keeping in mind this strategic report that came out last year from the Parks Department and the Oklahoma City Community Foundation about what are the underserved activities in the park systems, and so we keep all of these in mind, too. Wellness, special events, festivals, senior programs, walking, biking, family programs. So we really try to, uh, create new activities based on these unmet needs. And, um, hopefully you can see this better than I can. So starting with the year, we've been having an orchid show, uh, at the beginning of, of the new year, in February, when orchids are available to be shipped. And this is, this is a stunning show, and I would just encourage everybody to, to, uh, come to the conservatory and take a look. It's here through, uh, mid-March, and it's, it's really quite exquisite. Um, a lot of cities, many, many cities do not have conservatories, so Oklahoma City is really fortunate to have this jewel of a conservatory, which houses the most amazing, exquisite tropical plants, and we have over 1,000 orchids on display. They're incredible. Um, we have an extremely gifted curator. His name is Nate Shane, and he has done up this show beautifully, very creatively. It tells the story of the, um, the high point of orchid collecting around the world in the mid-1800s, when there was Orchid Fever, and people would risk their life on boats and crossing oceans to collect orchids and bring back to conservatories that were being built. So it, this show, we have interpretation. It tells that wonderful swashbuckling story of Orchid Fever, and, uh, it's just beautiful. So I would encourage everybody to attend. This is the type of thing that the, uh, public support that we get helps to fund, and also all of the various private monies and memberships that we get are funding beautiful exhibits like this. Coming up in just a few weeks is our annual gardening school. It's very popular. We get hundreds of people. This year, we have a great theme. It's based on urban gardening primarily, so it's the not-too-big garden. So if you don't have a large yard, or you have a large yard, but you'd like a smaller garden, we've got a internationally renowned speaker, Julie Moore-Masurvi, um, who will be our marquee speaker, uh, next month. And this is a wonderful fundraiser for us, too. We have planted over 25,000 bulbs last couple of months. Uh, we got a grant from the Rapp Foundation to plant, uh, thousands more this year. So after this cold, snowy winter, um, we will start to see bulbs coming up very soon, and we hope to make our spring display just incredibly beautiful every year. So we want to add more bulbs every year and just make it, um, a showstopper for the city to enjoy. Uh, we will be doing a lot of planting in the spring. There is still a lot of work to do to get the gardens up to their full potential. We have filling in to do, and we also want to create gardens that have a, a really strong, compelling educational purpose. So we got a grant from the Kirkpatrick Family Fund to plant a tall grass and short grass prairie, which will attract butterflies, it sustains pollinators. It's really exciting. It's going all around the dog park. So that will be put in, in the spring. It's quite an extensive area. It's fabulous for a sense of place with prairie, drought-tolerant plants. It's really exciting. It should attract a lot of butterflies, and, uh, that will be going in, in the spring, along with a lot of other plantings that you'll, you'll note around the grounds. Uh, we've been having an Easter egg hunt in the spring, very popular. It sells out. We have hundreds of families. In fact, this year, we're adding a second one because there's been such a demand. So I think that shows, back to that report, there's such a, um, void still of family activities downtown, that whenever we do these things, they just, they're, they're so popular. So I think people are, are really looking to come downtown for fun things. This is just to say, we are really committed to continuous improvement. Our great lawn is used so much by us, by other groups, that we have to make sure it's beautiful and green. So we overhauled it last year, put on a new turf. We spent a lot of money, but it was really worth it to, to make the great lawn great. So that is some of the things, some people don't know that, they, they don't notice that work, but we're, we're doing those things constantly. Filling in plants, as I said, we do a lot of that. We're developing walking tours this summer, so you can come and have a tour of, say, native trees, of drought-tolerant perennials, of native plants, and you'll be able to walk around the grounds and, and discover these things. This is our horticulture staff, and I can't say enough great things about them. They do all the work, they do the planning, and we're really fortunate to have this talented group, um, for the city to make the grounds so beautiful. We've been having, uh, a lot of programs to encourage reading, uh, reading about all kinds of topics, but especially nature, plants, gardens, and we've been having a spring festival every year. It has a lot of, it's different purposes. It's to raise funds, raise memberships, have a creative, uh, interesting family program, high quality at the gardens. We've been picking a book and bringing that to life, and last year was The Secret Garden, which was extremely successful. We had over, uh, I think, 8,000 people to it, 300 new memberships, and beautifully done.[1598.26] We really try to have quality, creative, high-level execution of our events. We work with partners, and I, I think if you come to one of these, you'll see the, it's not just your average kind of garden festival, it's, it's a, it's a higher level. We bring in community artists to help us execute our events, too. And we try to have really creative horticulture displays that you can learn from, and you might want to do in, in your home backyard, especially smaller yards in, in urban areas. And we turn our porch into reading, a reading room in the summer, so families can come and read. We have plant sales. All of these things are to show you, too, this is how we've been supporting ourselves. We are, in this budget year, it's, we are at a 50-50 partnership, so the foundation of our nearly 4 million budget, we are raising about 2 million of that through a number of things. A lot of it is contributions and gifts, and a lot of it is earned revenue. So everything from plant sales to festivals, there's a lot of it. It's a lot of money to raise, but we've been raising that capacity. We try to do really creative things in the children's garden, too. This was our thunder garden last year, and this was a lot of fun. We created these basketball plants, and they were cut to the exact height of various thunder players. So you could go in there and test yourself, measure yourself against all of these players, and kids had a lot of fun with that. We work with different groups. This is a group of children who are homeless from Positive Tomorrows and, and some school districts, and we got a grant to work with them, and they all got cameras, and they got to come out to the gardens on many occasions, photograph, they would learn how to photograph. And then we had a display in our, our gallery, which we have your own art displays. They came with their parents, and it was, it was really terrific. And so these are the kinds of things that we do. We do a lot of this kind of stuff throughout the year, but this was a particularly lovely program for these group of children. We do lots of other educational activities with schools. In fact, we're, we're hoping to hire a new full-time education person. Our school demand has really declined. We have a great education director, and she's been creating wonderful programs, lots of demand, so we want to serve even more kids, and especially school groups. We have special educational events throughout the year. This is bug-out, where they learn about insects. It's very popular, it sells out, ladybugs in the conservatories. We do adult classes. We, we serve a lot of adults and a whole range of programs throughout the year. Fundraising, again, we're always raising money. As you know, we have to increase our share of our, what we support for our annual budget. Our goal is 67 percent, so we've, we've got a little ways to go. This is one of the ways that we do that. We have a gala event that we've created two years ago, and this has raised over $100,000 for us. So we'll be offering this every other year. We have lots of wellness programs. Our yoga program has been super popular. We're, we're adding more and more, and they just seem to fill up, so we want to add even more wellness programs like that. Full moon bike rides, this has been extremely popular. We meet on the full moon once a month during the, the warmer months, and we bike around downtown, and have over 1,000 people. We're adding a running component this summer, which will be really fun, so you can come and take the run, the full moon run, and then bike after that. So we'll be adding that this summer, and it's a lot of fun. There's really a sense of a critical mass with all the bikes downtown. Concerts in the parks. We've been adding our own signature concert series the last two years, in addition to what the Arts Council does with their Sunday concerts. We, the gardens presented this John Fulbright concert last year, and I think the Oklahoma paper called it the best musical event in the city, which was terrific. So we're trying to spotlight Oklahoma talent in the gardens concerts. Movie nights, extremely popular. We'll be returning that. This is the scene from Frozen last year. It, it just is, is a wonderful event. A lot of people now come every week to that. We're doing kind of fun stuff. We, we, we did this Internet Cat Video Festival last year, and we thought it would just be a fun, one-time event, and it was so popular, when everybody clamored for us to do it again. So we're going to bring that back this summer. Though we try, we found this from the Walker Arts Center in Minneapolis. So we're looking, we're always looking around the country to find good ideas or programs like this that can travel. We're, we're trying to bring those here to Oklahoma City. It would, I mean, talk about community. We had all ages, families, everybody came out and had, had a great time. Shakespeare in the Park, I think this is a real jewel for the community. They do quality productions at the gardens, and I, again, the city is really fortunate to have this, this cultural group doing these in the summer. We added some artwork to the gardens this year. This is a prairie dog sculpture by the noted artist Nancy Schern, who's based in Boston. So we have this in the children's garden with a little prairie around it. We also added several by local artists. This is Kendall Howard, a goldfish down by the dock, which people love. They love to sit on it, take their picture. And we really see that as, as important, having public art, and we'd like to do more of that. Pumpkinville in the fall, this has become a huge event for us. We had 16,000 people come through this past fall, 500 memberships, so it's become a, a real fundraiser for us. We've been getting more and more artists involved, making things, and we have a great, great response from the community. It's, it's a really diverse crowd that's coming to this. We keep it very affordable. We give away a lot of free tickets, so it's accessible, and we just want to make this better and better every year, and, and a real tradition for people. It's, it's great fun, and I, I love nothing more than seeing whole generations come out to our events, the grandparents, the parents, and the children. So if we can create events that everybody's happy like that, I, I think that is really a, a great thing for, for the park to do, and the gardens. Our ice rink season just ended. We had a great year. We had a little over 30,000 people, so that's up by about 4,000 or 5,000 from last year. We had a little better weather. The carousel that we had at our winter shops, I think, helped. That attracted a lot of kids, and I think they came over to skate and vice versa. And ending with the holiday, we are trying to add more and more holiday decor every year as, as we can afford it. So we're trying to make the conservatory extra beautiful and, and a stunning poinsettia tree this year, which was really popular. Add more lights on the grounds. This was done by local artist Hugh Mead, who's wonderful. We, we work with him a lot. The winter shops were, were really terrific this year, we thought. We moved the location, had great vendors. It was very popular. Saturdays, we worked with Devon, and, and that worked out quite well. We had free days all throughout Saturdays at Christmas time. This carousel was really popular. We added this. 11,000 folks rode on it. And it's not confirmed, but we're, we're trying to, I, I can't say, tell you what it is, but we, we've got something we want to bring this summer to that location, which would be just as fun. So we're hoping that's going to work out. So stay tuned. And we'll be bringing this back next year. Thousands of people throughout the holidays come through and do crafts, events, and programs. And when we added up last year, everything that the gardens has done, and these are things where it's a ticketed event, or something like a movie night, where we do our best to estimate the crowds. So this is the number of people we've served, 68,829. And that doesn't include all the programming other groups do, like the Arts Council, or folks that rent our site for events, like Race for the Cure or AIDS Walk. That's just what we've done. So I, I hope that you see that we're really trying to reach out and serve a lot of people. Our terrace, one of the new things that we do, we, we built this a couple of years ago as an income source and a great place for programming. We're always trying to be creative and add new revenue sources to help us, and we realized the gardens, so many people get engaged there, and these proposals now have become these events. You have to stage this now. And so we thought, well, we can, we can help with that. And so we have a new rental program. If you want to get proposed, we can help set it up and have fun with that. So we're trying to take advantage of that. It serves people, it helps the gardens, and it's just fun for people to use the gardens for things like that. We also rent out the gardens a lot for large events. It's a great income source for us. It keeps it active, and the community has a place to do staged things like Race for the Cure, and we'd like to do more of that. So we always encourage any group out there, if you have a big event, you'd like to have it at the gardens, just give us a call, and we can work with you, hopefully, to make it happen. Park House and Ice House. And lastly, part of all of what we do is to, our, what we're trying to do is grow our capacity with fundraising. So we're reaching out to individuals, foundations, and corporations for support, and we've really grown our capacity, and we have to continue to do that. But this planting and flagpole was made possible by Bob Minders, and we reach out to a lot of foundations. We've been getting terrific support from local and national foundations listed here. Our membership is growing. We have about 1,000 more members from where we were last year. That's been significant income. And this is just a list of all the corporations in town, all the businesses that support us, from in-kind donations to major sponsorships, to annual fund gifts. So I hope you can see that we're working hard to grow our capacity, to meet our responsibility to get to our 67 percent in the next few years. And we look forward to all the exciting development around the park, and thinking of ways to take advantage of that, too, to not only serve the people that will be coming to conventions, or new office folks, new visitors, how we can create programs and places and events that will interest them, and how they can also support the gardens, too. That's our year in review.
All right. Maureen, thank you very much. Any comments or questions from council?
Just me, a comment, Your Honor. I think it's a great, great facility. I've been down there a couple of times on Sundays, and it's full. And I already moved through it. It's really a major attraction. You've given a great job there.
Yeah, I'll say. Yeah, I couldn't be more pleased.
Yeah, a couple of quick comments, Maureen. One, your social media is just blowing up over this orchid show. It is all over the place. It sounds wonderful.
It's, it's a lovely show.
It's open through the middle of March, did you say?
It's open through March 14.
Okay, so we need to really encourage people to go do that. As pretty as this picture is in front of us, I saw yesterday some of the most beautiful shots of it in the snow. The gardens, I mean, just looks spectacular on that pretty snowy day. And to Pat's comment, I really appreciate the bilingual work that you're doing.